It's my pleasure to call to order tonight's regular Tiburon Town Council meeting for Wednesday, November first, twenty twenty three. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nick Far.
I am here.
Councilmember Thier is absent. Councilmember Wellner is absent. Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Here.
And Mayor Ryan.
Here. Thank you. Um, before we get to the meat of the agenda, um, we're going to start by inviting the public to make comments that are on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Um, Madam Clerk, could you give instructions to the public as to how to do that?
If you're calling and using Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you'd like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your web or controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're using Zoom, I will invite you to turn your camera and microphone on to address the council. Please accept the request from the Zoom host that you're being promoted to a panelist. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Thank you. Do we have anybody online who'd like to make a comment? I don't know if it's not on the agenda?
Seeing none.
Okay, anyone in the chambers that wants to make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda? No? Okay, I'll close that part, that open public comment period, and we'll move on to the agenda. Um, the first thing tonight, um, because we had somebody abandon his post on the Parks, Open Space and Trails Commission for reasons that are unclear to us, we have an opening on post. Um, oh, you said right there, sorry. Um, so, um, we're going to interview all the candidates who have submitted, uh, a request to be interviewed. Um, and Madam Clerk, is it okay if I go out of order if we don't have the people who are scheduled to be interviewed here? Because I see that we have a Mr. Wong as the first interviewee, and I don't believe he's here.
I believe you are correct. Yes, we can go out of order.
So if it's okay with you, um, Mr. Malhotra, can we get you up to the podium first? Sorry, it's, uh, great. Uh, thank you for being here. Um, so I, you did submit information and we have read it and that, and that's great, but if you could just start us off by introducing yourself and giving us sort of a reason for why you're interested in this post, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Uh, well, thanks for having me and, and I don't know if anyone's listening in Zoom. Um, but, uh, yeah, Gotham Malhotra, nice to meet you all. I've moved to Tiburon, uh, the start of twenty twenty one, so coming up on three years. Um, I'm married to my wife Meloni. I have two young kids and I encourage age four and two. Um, and I think I'm very excited to be here today. I've been had the chance to go to a few post meetings, uh, spent a lot of time with Tim Burr, uh, who is also a fun guy. Um, and, uh, you know, so I got, got to see a little bit of the action, what it's about. I think what's really drawing me to, uh, to participate, I think one is obviously like everyone here, I'm sure, just very vested in just the amazing beauty of Tiburon. I'm having two young kids. I plan and hope to be here for many years decades to come and raise my kids here and go to school here. So kind of very vested in making sure we have kind of the best parks and recreations and everything available to us. Um, and then I think, uh, you know, to coming at relatively, I think, younger, I'm, I'm hoping, you know, to get more involved in kind of local government and, and so I'm hoping what I bring, which is like kind of my experience, a lot on the business side, working in NGOs, um, having lived in five different countries, hopefully a lot of like diverse perspective and the ability to help kind of like prioritize and make those decisions. I'm hoping to leverage things like our surveys to make kind of more data-backed decisions while obviously like really leveraging and hearing the community to do so. So really kind of hitting and getting the most effective things done for our community.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, do any of my fellow council members have questions?
Questions?
Yeah.
Sure. Um, so do you, do you have a sense of what, uh, Post is focused on right now?
Yeah, right now it's the master plan. Right now we're in the analyze phase, so that's going to take us through Fab, and then we're going to kind of finish our recommendations. So I think now it's a mix of walking through the parks, doing surveys, collecting all that data, creating that input before submitting the plan.
And do, do you have a sense of, um, any priorities you would like to make sure are addressed?
Yeah, I think from the two hundred and fifty people that were surveyed, it's clear that paved and unpaved trails is the top priority. In terms of unmet needs, it's things like kayaking, swimming pool and committee centers. So I think now that we have our hypothesis that that's the area where we want to focus in on, my next move would be to talk to more folks and understand what can we do. Some things such as the paved and unpaved may be improving signage, which we know is a problem. People also complain about the lack of facilities. I think those are things we could hit on. Other than that, I think we need to explore more broadly on some of these unmet needs. How costly are they? Are they really representative of what the, what the community really needs? So I think we'll have to like dig in deeper there.
Sure. Do, do you have a sense of how, um, let's see, it used to be called Joint Rec, now it's called The Ranch, uh, fits in, in the picture of recreation activities in the town?
Um, sorry, the question?
Yes. What is the role of, uh, the Belvedere Tiburon, uh, Joint Recreation Committee, which is now called The Ranch?
Yeah.
Um, do you have a sense of what, where they fit in the recreational activities that are provided?
I mean, I think they're really important. So I think, um, you know, based on the survey and, you know, based on my understanding and usage of the ranch, I think it's, it's very important, uh, for both the adults and young individuals, everything from after-school activities through all the activities they they do provide. So I think that is like a huge opportunity area to continue to see how can we, uh, fully utilize it, um, and take advantage of it. I, I know like having young kids and just taking them to strawberry for Halloween. Um, and young kids who will soon be participating in after-school programs. Um, and the fact that the third and fourth unmet need really was a community center. Um, I think it gives us a strong baseline and foundation to hopefully do more with it. Uh, so yeah, that's like a very exciting part of.
Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Malhotra.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, a couple of questions. One is, um, what is your favorite Tiburon park and why?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think, uh, for me, I, I live behind Delmar, uh, Middle School. So I think I, I'm often at McKegney Green, Blackies and, and, uh, the South and Olds Park a lot, uh, just because that's where I frequent with my kids. Um, so yeah, those, those are the ones I'm either biking or walking by most often. Um, I mean, there are some like the smaller parks, like the Cypress Hollow Park, um, Bel Air Park, you know, that maybe I'll walk by and stuff, but realistically I'm spending most of my time, I think, with the most of the community at uh, the greatest hits.
All right. Um, and then, um, talk to us a little bit about your decision-making process. How do you generally make decisions on on, uh, on issues where there are multiple stakeholders?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, uh, yeah, most recently I've been responsible for a six hundred million dollar GMV business. Um, I think my decision-making process, and this is like public office, so I'm thinking about my experiences at an NGO and working in business. I think first and foremost, super important to talk to our constituents. I mean, that really is the rule. I'm representative of the people. So I think we want to make sure that we're really hearing from all diverse groups of folks. I also think we need to be careful that we're not only hearing from the most vocal people. So I think wherever we can, you know, use data, I know luckily enough this town's fortunate enough to have a surveys commission to kind of give you a better representative sample. I would start with that. Then you have to dig in. You have to like talk to people and say like, what really is this? And like any government, right? You also need to look at the minority. If there is a strong vocal opposition, I've been to a couple of post meetings where people were very adamant about not removing trees. That's super important. We need really to hear them. And then when endowed, which I think actually is really important because, uh, you need to call the professionals like the, you know, the arborists or whatever, who actually know the details, who can tell you, like, you know, is something unique to this region, not what needs to be done. So I think it's a mix of, uh, you know, using data to get a more holistic view that's representative of the people, talk to people, and then making sure at least you're hearing the voices of the minority and their concerns, and then calling the professionals if they're raising valid concerns that, that I may not be educated on.
Thank you. Great. Thanks. Um, is there anything else we need to know about you before? Oh, please, yeah.
Let me ask a follow-up question. Um, what is your sense of differences, if any, um, in the process of making decisions and implementing projects, uh, in a business environment as compared to a government environment?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, I think, uh, I think the government really is representative of all people. Um, I don't take that lightly. I think in business, it's, you, you typically want to figure out what's the best, like, return on investments. You're really looking at how can we have the biggest benefit for most people for the least cost? I think the important thing about, and a civic duty of government really is, uh, making sure that the voice of the minority. So you don't have tyranny of the majority, right? Going back to Rawls and, and Thomas Jefferson. So you got to make sure that you're hearing the voice of these individuals. And so that's the big difference, I, I think. And I think it's obviously working, working with kind of the local government as well and hearing, um, their opinions and their history and knowledge. And I think this is going to be, I'm sure, a very, uh, humbling experience for me as well, because I know that there are a lot of other town council people and people on post who've been there a lot longer than me. So I actually fully expect the first few months as more of an inquisition period to kind of bring my experience and ask questions and probe versus seeing what direction we should go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, so you're welcome to stick around. We have eight more candidates we have to interview, and then later we will we have the opportunity to pick one of the nine. Um, and you're welcome to stick around, but, um, thank you for coming.
This is good. This is good. Harder than my job interview. Thanks.
Thanks for being here. Um, has Mr. Wong come into the room? Great. So if we could have you come up to the podium here, and then that was Mr. Malhotra. Welcome, Malhotra. Yeah. Yeah, we had to switch your route. Hey, thanks.
Hi.
Um, thanks for coming. Um, you, we know you sent in material and we've read that and we appreciate that, but if you could just start us off by introducing yourself and giving us how did you come here and like the pith of your interest in the post position?
Sorry, I'm not very good with mics, so, um, hopefully this is okay. Um, so, um, I guess a little bit about myself. I've been part of the Tiburon community for the last twenty years. I think, um, I've had two kids who've gone through all, um, the three Tiburon schools. Um, and so, um, and also I'm an avid user of the open spaces. Um, I would say I have had many, many, many hours, um, along the trail. Um, one of my funniest stories is that, um, I, I wasn't a runner before I moved to Tiburon, but, um, we remodeled the house. And so every morning I would go talk to our contractors. And right afterwards, I would have to run off the stress. And so I started running along, um, the, the bike path and, um, and I I was just so happy. I, I, the only reason why we moved here was to be closer to the schools and, um, it, it turned out to be life-changing. And so the reason why I'm here is, um, I I, I deeply feel, um, the need to protect the space. Um, not, not just for my own, um, usage, um, but for many generations, I feel like, uh, the, the beauty of this area is something that we need to, uh, think carefully, not just for what the community wants now, but over many, many years, uh, into the future. Um, and that's what, um, yeah, it's just the, to me, the open spaces is what's special about this community. If you think about it, you know, what was open space was railroad tracks, you know, like less than a hundred years ago, which is mind-blowing. And so, um, I feel like coming here, um, is my way of giving back, but also feeling the need to protect something that I would say, um, just, as all things, just needs help. And, and I understand that there are many views of, um, what people would want, um, and, um, for the spaces and both, um, current and the future, and I'm open to, um, all those ideas. Um, but yes, I would like to give back a little bit.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, do any of my fellow council members have questions for Mr. Wong? Councilmember Clark?
Um, well, I'll, I'll ask you the same question. Have you?
Is that fair? Because I listen to me. Okay.
And, and you had a few more minutes you're thinking to think about it than the previous. All right. So I'll deduct two points. No. Seriously, um, um, do you have any sense of, of what Post is considering now, what they're doing, what the process is?
Um, excuse me?
Do you have any sense of what the Parks and Open Space and Trails Commission?
Okay.
What their business is now, what they're considering and what the process is?
Um, so I, I, I understand that the commission has to understand all the needs of the community, um, and understand all the changes that are going on in laws, not just the local laws, but, um, state and federal laws that affect, um, the open spaces and that this committee is the, um, is what sort determines, um, what direction that we take. Um, if I'm mistaken, then, um, you know.
So have you attended any of the meetings or watched them on Zoom or read any of the staff reports?
I have read the, uh, staff reports, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Nick Far. Yes, I'll, I'll also ask the same questions. Um, what is your favorite park or trail or open space in Tiburon and, uh, and, and why?
Um, I, I definitely would say that my favorite, um, um, space is the, the bike path, including Blackies, that, that stretch is just golden. Um, it's a, um, space that's highly used. Um, there are many different, um, uses for that space. Um, and yeah, it's just, I, I, I don't know anyone who doesn't have some use for that space. Um, and, and there's a, there's, there's a lot of ideas of, you know, like more use of the space. Um, um, but, uh, that, that's definitely my favorite space, but it's also, I think, the one that because of all the, um, different uses of it, that, you know, some balance always needs to be, um, um, taken into account to, um, ensure that, um, everyone who uses space has a good experience.
And then, uh, my follow-up is, is can you talk to us a little bit about how you think, uh, you know, decisions should be made in a, in a public setting? So how, your decision-making process on post?
Yeah, uh, that's always a difficult one. Um, I would say, obviously, we, as in a public position, you have to take input from everyone. Um, I also believe that unfortunately, not everyone goes into details to understand all the rules and regulations um, that are required, um, and all the other factors that go into decision-making. And so you have to be careful to not just listen and I think there's a, there's a component of providing and ensuring that the people when they're providing the input, understand the full ramifications of what they're asking for. And it's, it's very easy to take input from people. Um, um, I, you, you've seen my resume. I used to work for, uh, Nextdoor and I actually worked for the public agency, uh, area of Nextdoor. Um, and, um, people always had input. And what was really hard for us working with the public agencies is how do you, um, reverse direction? You know, how do you communicate to your constituents, um, all the important information that they need to know to have an objective opinion o- on the topic? And that's really difficult, right? Because people don't have long attention spans. Um, they want to do the right thing. They are concerned. Um, and so it's a two-way street. You, you have to do that. I mean, we're, I'd like to think we're all pretty reasonable people and w- we are where we're at because we have maybe slightly different experiences. But given the same information and same experiences or understanding of experiences, um, there's a lot of common ground. And, um, I, I think that's important to understand.
Thank you. Um, so as you might have heard me say, we later in the meeting will be considering an appointment. Unless you have any further questions. Um, so you're welcome to stick around and, and see who we select, um, but.
Oh, you're selecting tonight?
Uh, it is on the agenda. So yeah, after all the interviews, we can, we can do that. Um, so thank you for coming. It was, I really appreciate it here.
Thank you.
Um, next on the schedule is Tucker McLean. Is Mr. McLean online with us tonight?
Looks like he is not online quite yet.
Okay, I know we're a little bit ahead of schedule, I think, so.
I did speak with him this afternoon, so he should be on any minute.
Okay, thanks. Um, unrelated, the, the, the part that, um, Mr. Wong brought up about uh, towns wanting to communicate out to residents really reson- resonated with me. We've had some challenges in the last, last week or so. It's not open to public comment time. You can't say.
I guess you've had.
Something that hasn't been resolved yet.
It's not on the agenda.
Um, is Miss Aguilera on, in case we need to switch?
She's not on yet either.
Well, we have people in the audience. Um, what do you think? Should I move on to some person in the chambers? Vice Mayor, what do you think?
I'm sorry.
Should I move on to someone in the chambers instead of wait for the person who's going to interview via Zoom? Okay. So, um, I believe that's Miss Godfrey in the back, or could we have you come to the podium? We'll interview now, you know?
I think we've met before.
No, but you're, our arc famous as of last week, right? Yes. So, so thanks and appreciate you coming in. Um, so like with the other people, if you could just start off with a quick introduction and we'll get to the essence of why you want to be involved with Post. Thanks.
Sure. Um, I'm Lena Godfrey, mother of three, soon to be four young children residing here in Tiburon. I've actually been living here since two thousand and fifteen, so preceding having children a little bit. Um, just sort of observing and then getting more and more involved in the community as my children evolved and grew up. Um, I've been out of the traditional workforce for the past five years as I've been having all these children. Um, but I did work in international development management consulting and public health, mostly in the NGO space. Um, but really the reason I'm here is that the birth of my first daughter kind of catapulted me into this new world of disability advocacy and learning about inclusion and accessibility on many different levels of society. Not excluding the community level, but also the school level, also, you know, larger scale levels. Um, she's six now. She's my oldest. I also have a three and a half year old and a one and a half year old. Um, but this has kind of become one of my most important missions in life now to sort of improve the world and community we live in, first and foremost, our sort of micro community from an inclusivity and accessibility standpoint. Um, and also for generations to come, of course, for my children, but also for all of the other children and for the society we want these children to create, create for us, um, as we age. Uh, so you saw her on the cover of the Arc. And, uh, I guess I'm sort of, my platform here is my lived experience that I have lived and continue to live parenting and being disability adjacent to this child, um, having to research the access issues with public spaces before using them, even in my own community. Ultimately, having to avoid some that I used to use, um, and just sort of really noticing things that you might not notice otherwise in, until it affects you directly or your child. Um, so now as I advocate for these kinds of spaces, I think this is a really opportune time to, to have a voice in this community, not just for young disabled kids, not just for children in wheelchairs, for the one in four people in all communities that have a disability, visible or invisible, um, that, you know, can benefit from their community resources and spaces and outdoor areas being welcoming to them. Um, so that is where I'd like to stand here and that's what I'd like to contribute here.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And just out of curiosity, have you had a chance to go to Post and advocate for any of these things in front, at one of their meetings?
I did attend the community workshop in September and then I observed the, uh, Zoom one the next day during dinnertime. Um, and that was actually really helpful. I sat with Holly, who's not here today, but she was in my group for the work session. And also the director of the ranch was there, whom I know through my children doing activities at the ranch. Um, and also Angela, who's on Post, uh, and she actually encouraged me to kind of get out there. Um, and my involvement in this has, uh, increased and evolved also on the Marin County, County Open Space and Parks level too. So I won't make any claims to be like an experienced local government person at all. Um, but I will say I am learning very quickly about how the system works and how to work it and how to just get to know what is available and what can be done.
Great. Thank you. Do my fellow council members have questions?
Um, sure. And, and forgive me, uh, this, this is more asking you to educate me. Uh, what, especially given the limited resources we have here for recreational activities, space, the actual land, what are the accessibility issues for people of disability besides play structures?
Mm-hmm. So play structures are one of them. Another one, which might have already been mentioned, is sort of texture of trails, I guess you could call it. Um, so for example, I live right next to the o- old St. Hillary Open Space, which I used to use all the time, but now it's really pretty rocky, like large rock, so you can't even, uh, roll like a heavy-duty jogging stroller over it. Um, and so things like that, sort of smoothing out of trails, adding maybe little easements or little sort of thoroughfares. I think you guys have a name for it, like steps, something and passageways or something like that.
Steps and lanes.
Yeah, so those kinds of things. Play structures are a big one. Uh, the Old Rail Trail has become my favorite, uh, spot now because it is very accessible and it's paved and it's just allows you to enjoy kind of one of the best spots and views of Tiburon. Um, but really kind of just, you know, being aware of entryways into things. Is there a big gate there that stops you from entering with any kind of mobility device? Or, uh, if you have to navigate around something for like an elderly grandparent or something like that, uh, you know, things to consider like that. So some things can be very small and not, not, you know, funding intensive, and some things are larger projects, like, you know, overhauls of playgrounds.
So if, if you were appointed, um, are you prepared also with the, with the same passion uh, to engage in the rest of the business that Post addresses?
Yeah, uh, so play structures are far from the only thing that I'm passionate about, and also children are not the only demographic I look to serve. I mean, my, my parents live in the county, so they're here a lot. They're aging. Um, really, my goal is for, is to help Tiburon's strategic plan and master plan be made for and keep in mind from the get-go to serve everybody from the body they're born in to the body they live in now, to the body they're going to live in in forty years, and all that that entails in between. So that could be parks, that could be play structures, that could be trails, that could be open spaces, um, that could be recreational classes and facilities and all of those kinds of things too.
And, and so I, I, well, I'm not going to tell you what your answer is. Are you prepared then to deal, uh, with conflicting, um, needs and requests for recreational activities and, um, structures and opportunities?
Yeah, that, that's sort of the advocacy that I've taken on voluntarily already. So yes, I'm, I'm aware that that is a part of it and that this is a democracy. So everyone's voice needs to be heard.
Thank you.
Um, so I think you kind of answered my, my first question, uh, with the Old Rail Trail. Um, and so I'll, I'll sort of go to the second question, which is, um, can you talk a little bit about, about how you think the decision-making process um, as a, a, a post commissioner, um, how you would do that and, and, and what you would think about?
Yeah, so I think that, uh, data should be leveraged as much as possible, and I know there are challenges to collecting that data as widespread and in-depth as desired. That was discussed a little bit at the community workshop, also how some of the surveys that went out were missed or not answered, or maybe answered by too many members of a household and things like this that you encounter. Also using, you know, press and social media to understand and hear the voices of all of the community members to then, you know, use a fair and democratic process to make decisions that that reflect what the community is asking for, not just the needs of the people on the board, and not just the needs of the people who are being the loudest at the time.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, and thanks for coming. I really appreciate hearing you. And, um, as I've said to other people, we'll make a selection later. So if you're welcome to stick around if you'd like.
Thank you.
Um, has Mr. McLean joined us online?
He has not. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to get him on the phone either. So I'm.
Okay.
I'm happy to let you know when he comes on.
Okay, thanks. That'd be great. Um, and I don't see Ms. Chiswick Patterson here. Is Kathleen Aguilera here?
She is not. We are one minute ahead of schedule. So again, I spoke with her, so I am expecting.
She is not. We are one minute ahead of schedule. So again, I spoke with her, so I am expecting her.
Okay, um, are you, do you mind if I go ahead with Mr. Shepherd? Is that right? Okay, um, Mr. Shepherd, would you like to come to the podium now? Thanks. Appreciate your flexibility. Um, I know that you also attended that, uh, park, that master plan update. Um, but if you could just give us a recap, uh, of what brings you here and what you hope that this role is about, thanks.
So, uh, my wife and I and now our three children have lived here for twenty-six years. The kids, not quite that many since they weren't born at the beginning, but, um, we've, we've really loved our time in Tiburon and, um, would like to do what we can to help the town. It's really impressive to come to a meeting like this and see the incredible quality of people in the town and the candidates. It's, uh, to tribute to you on the town council and to the town in general, it's really a very impressive group.
Thank you. Sorry, um, else for Fredericks, would you like to start off with questions, please?
Um, sure, I, I noticed, uh, that you talked about Richardson Bay Lineal Park and how it could be better used. Um, one of the things that Post is, is going to uh, focus on is about the current conflicting uses. Have you given any thought to that? And how would you resolve any of the issues that you've thought about?
Um, I've given thought to a whole lot of things about the park, beca- the lineal park a- as well as other parks, but mostly the lineal park because I live right by it. And I'm in it every day, most days, many times. I use it to ride my bike to the ferry in the mornings and ride my bike home in the evenings, uh, into the wind. Uh, and, uh, I used to use it to run um, until my knees decided I should bike and swim instead. Um, so I'm, I'm there all the time. I, I see the the many different uses. It's, it's wonderful to see so many different people of different age groups, all enjoying this beautiful space. Um, and I, I think the challenge, and I think this is a little of what you're getting at, is there are some additional recreational activities that it would be great to provide space for that people in the town appear to be interested in, and the challenge is to be able to do that while still maintaining the beauty and the tranquility and the views and all the things that bring so many different people from the town out to the park. Uh, I think that's a challenge, but a great opportunity, especially given that we, I guess, are likely to get the, the sanitary district, a piece of the sanitary district property, which gives us an opportunity to go big if we want to go big or to go with a community center or something like that, or to go small. Uh, and so there are all sorts of different um, and potentially conflicting uses, but it's such a great space. And we have such a great opportunity, it seems to me we should be up to the challenge of being able to maintain the beauty and the tranquility of the place while providing additional recreational oppo- opportunities for people in the town who would like.
And so just one more, the usual question, have you, uh, taken the opportunity to either watch one of the Zoom meetings or read staff reports and have a sense of what the work of Post is right now?
I, I have not actually attended a Post meeting. I, I did go to the workshop here relating to the master plan and I, I did the walk through at the park as well. I've, I checked the agenda for the last year of Post, just to get a sense of, of what it has been doing and I, I see issues about electric bikes, which seem like an important issue for those of us who use the path on a, on a regular basis. And, and another challenge where you have a lot of people who are using and enjoying electric bikes and their risks and challenges that that creates, especially to people who have mobility issues or who um, are really small or, or really old. So it's another challenge that I hope we can work through and resolve.
Thank you. Um, by the way, did you have any change in what you thought your role would be after having gone to those master plan workshops? Did, did that sort of change anything about your perception of the role?
As, as my experience has been tonight, I, I'm just so impressed by all the different wonderful views and, and people. And so to me, the, I don't, I don't come with any great answers. I, I come with, wow, there are some really intelligent, thoughtful, fair-minded people. Perhaps there are a few others, but, but for the most part, you know, wonderful, intelligent, fair-minded people. And you want to listen to them and you want to listen to, uh, the ones who are vocal and you want to feel out the people who are not so vocal. Um, and, and from that, you want to talk to your colleagues and, and figure out, okay, what additional information or expertise should we be gathering and relying upon to make decisions? Uh, and then try to come to the best decision that you can come to and then be able to sell it essentially as, as the right decision.
Great, thank you. Councilor Nick Far.
Um, well, I think both my questions kind of got answered through, through, uh, through the course of, uh, of this intro. Uh, so I'll, I'll ask a different question, sort of, um, you know, what, uh, what improvements would you like to see in, in Tiburon? From a parks or open space standpoint?
Our perspective, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, glad you narrowed that for me. Um, n- not that, not that there's anything wrong, it's just everything, there are always things that could be better, like the traffic on Tiburon Boulevard, which I appreciate the mayor's efforts to, to aid in. Um, uh, but I, I, to me, I think the one thing that needs to be improved is opportunities, recreational opportunities for younger people. Um, we don't, we don't have as many of them as we should. Uh, that ties into the question of whether we ought to do some sort of community center, but there are also other recreational opportunities that could be provided that we're, we're not providing. I think that's that and the, the lack of some facilities that some people want. I know I seem to recall the whole beach volleyball thing. And if there are a lot of people who want beach volleyball, we ought to be able to find the right space to do that. So there are, that's where I think, you know, from my time in the park, that's what needs to be improved. It, it, I think trying to come to a solution, uh, on electric bikes and making sure people pay attention to the speed limits is, is another thing that be, that, that's a challenge, it needs to be improved. Thank you, appreciate that. Um, and thank you very much for coming and speaking with us tonight. Um, and as you've heard me say, um, you're welcome to stick around because we will make a selection later.
Thanks for having me.
I'll appreciate it.
Of course.
Adam Clark, where are we with the online interviewees?
Ms. Aguilera is here. She'll be appearing on the TV here momentarily.
Fantastic, thank you. Hey, good evening, Ms. Aguilera, how are you? Thanks for coming. Can you hear us? Uh, you're still muted. If you can unmute, that'd be great.
There we go. Hi, guys. Sorry about that.
Um, so thanks for coming. Um, if you could just, we, we could get your material and, and have read it over, but if you would like to start us off, just reintroducing yourself and talking to us about why exactly you want to, um, get this role on the Parks, Open Space and Trails Commission, that'd be great.
Yeah. So Kathleen Aguilera is my name. I've been living here, um, since, um, two summers ago, moved here in, in June of last year. Um, lived here once before. I love the area. Uh, I have a daughter who is at Delmar Middle School. And, um, myself, I substitute teach in the day with the Reed School District. So all the schools in Reed where needed, I've gotten to know a lot of the kids. Um, and I have a background in environmental studies. That is my undergraduate degree. I am currently working on a master's in counseling psychology in which I hope to incorporate, um, nature therapy, this sort of thing. And, um, my own nature therapy is, um, walking my dog around Tiburon. You meet a lot of people that way. And, um, so I guess through being in the schools and, um, being out on the trails um, and then having this background, I, I feel invested as, um, being a part of this community. I really like the small town feel of Tiburon. And, um, would like to, you know, help out where my skills could be of service.
Thank you for the introduction. Um, do any of my fellow council members have questions for Ms. Aguilera? Vice Mayor Fredericks, please.
Um, and, and pardon me for not looking at you. I asked the question, but you're over to my right. Um, so you have a really interesting resume with respect to creating, uh, programs and, and making those opportunities available. But a lot of the work of Post is actually about land use and regulating the use of land. Is that something that will be interesting enough, uh, to keep you on Post and keep you engaged?
Sure, that's a good question, because I also, um, have a little bit of graduate study in design and architectural design. So, um, that, yeah, there's a creative artist in me as well that likes to the thought of incorporating that quarter, that sort of like land use um, with, you know, the flow of people. And, um, and then, you know, um, ecology and what works for the environment, you know?
And, and so were you able to either read staff reports, look at a Zoom meeting, or do anything to give you a sense of what the business of Post is right now?
I haven't. I haven't familiarized myself with, with this particular.
Um, Councilor Nick Far?
Yes, um, can you, uh, let us know what your favorite park is in Tiburon and, and why?
Well, my favorite park, that's a good question. Um, there's the Little Doggy Park that's at the bottom of Lyford. I live up at the top of Lyford, or not the top, but um, towards the top, um, I'm right in line with the, um, St. Hillary's Preserve. So I guess because I go over there a lot and, um, I love that area. Um, and then the Doggy Park down below is more of a social thing. Uh, could be those areas are, are my favorites.
Right. Um, and then can you, uh, wa- walk us through how, uh, how your decision-making process would work on, uh, on, on parks? What would you take into consideration?
Oh, gosh, I guess, um, ecology and, um, you know, the living and non-living things and how they work together. And then, um, people and, um, their usage and enjoyment, whether it's an aesthetic pleasure and leaving it as is, um, or more physical usage where people recreate, um, I would take those things into consideration. Um, and, um, I guess all of the external things like, like weather and, um, erosion. Um, and then the residents who might be affected in the surrounding park areas, whether it's by noise or parking and traffic. So I, I guess those are some of the ways I would look at it.
Thank you very much. Um, as you've probably heard me say, um, we are making a decision or we can make a decision later tonight from among the candidates. So if you want to stick around, you're welcome to. Um, but thank you so much for being with us tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Adam Clark, is Mr. McLean with us yet?
He is not.
Okay. Um, and I do see Mr. Moon in the room. Um, could I have you come up? And we're still, we're a little out of order tonight and running ahead of schedule, but I hope, uh, that audible was okay with you.
Absolutely.
Um, so thank you for joining us, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I, uh, like the others, I know you've submitted materials and we've read them and, um, if you could just really briefly reintroduce yourself, but, um, give us, uh, distill the essence of, you know, why you're here and what you, what you want to do on Post.
Absolutely. Honored to be here in front of you guys and, uh, really appreciate the consideration. Um, I've been a resident in Tiburon for over ten years. I have married and I have two boys who have grown up here essentially since kindergarten. And we've gone through Reed, we've gone through Bel Air, we've gone through Delmar. Uh, they're now both at, uh, Branson High School here in Marin. And we've had a wonderful time in Tiburon. I love this city or town. And I truly believe that it's one of the best towns in the Bay Area, possibly the country. I grew up in Ohio, looking at cornfields and cows and rarely did I ever see the water and I'd sometimes pinch myself thinking, you know, how amazing this place is. And so for me, we, we used a lot of the amenities in Tiburon with the kids. Uh, the ranch programming was fantastic. Um, the boys have played fishing, I mean, sorry, they played tennis, they've gone fishing on Elephant Pier. We use the Tiburon Bike Trail all the time. Um, the, the trails and the open space are fantastic for our dog that we have. Uh, you know, he's been, our kids have been on baseball teams, soccer teams, basketball teams, volleyball teams, you name it, we've, we've pretty much done it. Um, and I really want to, I'm really here because I want to get back. Um, I've left the corporate world a couple of years back. I now work for myself, I have some time. And I have a lot of great perspective on what this town has offered, but I think it can be, I think it could be so much more. Um, I think that this place is a fantastic place to live and play and relax. But the opportunities, uh, for this town is really a hidden gem to, to offer more amenities for our community. Um, it's pretty exciting. And so this comes at a pretty opportune time with the master plan coming up. And I want to be a big part of influencing that and helping shape what this town could be uh, for the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Hopefully I'll still be here and hopefully my sons will get married and hopefully they'll have children. And so I really want my grandchildren to come back and visit me and I really want this town to have a lot of fun amenities for them to do so. Um, look, I, I've been here, I, I know the community well. Um, I've, uh, had an experience and background in investments. Uh, I've worked in private equity for over two decades and so the process of thinking through pros and cons, looking at data, weighing tough issues, making difficult decisions is something that I've done a lot before and very comfortable with. Um, and, uh, really hope that that if not me, that the person that sits in that chair, uh, has the time and the commitment to really make Tiburon a better place, because ultimately that's my, that's my goal.
Um, thank you. Uh, Councilor Fredericks, do you want to start us off with a question?
Uh, well, I think Mr. Moon actually answered would be my first question. He certainly is aware of, um, the master plan, uh, process that's coming up. It's an important part of separating, of, of creating, um, opportunities for recreation in the future. Um, but let me ask him to comment on one of my favorite, uh, questions that I always, um, think about when I see very accomplished business peoples come before us. Do you have a sense of the difference, um, in the process of making decisions and implementing projects on a government level as compared to in business?
Yes, I haven't been in public service before, so I can't say that I have the intimate knowledge that someone like yourself would have and the experience of how that all goes about. Uh, but I do have a sense that it's very different. Um, in business, you can move much quicker. Uh, you can probably make decisions with less people making those decisions in a group. I understand that in the public process, you really need to think about your constituents and weigh the interests of many different parties. The process itself, I think, can be quite difficult because you have to take into consideration all the different interests that are involved in that important decision. Uh, it can be lengthy, uh, It can be lengthy. There could be process that can delay things. But you know, that's just how it works. And for me, I'm a person where I actually really enjoy the 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 process of decision-making in the business process. And in investments, you know, it takes a lot of time to get the data, collect the right opinions. Way pros and cons really. Sometimes, you know, decisions are not black and white. A lot of times they're not black and white. They're gray. And we just try to make the best decisions we can based on the information that we have. And that's what I hope to do, serving in that role.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Nick Far.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. What is your favorite park in Tiburon and why?
Geez, I don't know if I can say there's a favorite, because we use so many different parks and systems. So, you know, the Tiburon Rail Trail, the bike path is a phenomenal asset that we have. I use it a lot doing walks, walking the dog. When the boys were learning how to to bike, we would use it. It's just a treasured asset and I think it was a savior for our whole town during COVID. I mean, I felt like the whole town was out there walking, you know, 20 feet away from each other. But it was just an amazing amenity that we had. Blackies is amazing as well. Many times we've taken our dog out there to play with other dogs. The the open space is phenomenal to do hikes. I just, I really can't point to one, but there's just so many good things about about town.
And so my other question was usually about decision-making process, but Alice, I think you kind of, you kind of asked, it's all right. I think the end result is is good. We got it. We got an answer. So I think that's, that's all I've got.
Thanks. I'm curious, one of the things you mentioned was wanting to be involved in the, as the master plan goes forward. Do you have any specific ideas that you were hoping to bring with you into the discussion or was it more general?
Yeah, I participated in the master plan Zoom meeting where they were brainstorming about ideas. And it was an interesting process. It was actually wonderful to hear all the creativity that came out. You know, look, I don't have any prescribed notions of what we should or shouldn't do. I think part of my role is to listen, to get that, the data and to collect opinions and thoughts before making decisions like that. But I'll tell you, I was very, I kind of like the community garden idea as an example that came up. And I think that makes a lot of sense and something that probably we should take into consideration and do some more research around. I think we have a phenomenal opportunity with that space with the ponds to create a rec center. And provide some interesting amenities for the community. You know, people talk about a kayak or stand-up paddleboard launch. I think that would be amazing if we can find the right place to do it. I know that's been tough to to find, but a worthwhile endeavor if we can figure it out. And, you know, I think it would be great to also connect, if we can, the bike path all the way to town. So right, right around the library, it kind of ends and then it turns into biking onto, you know, a road. That, you know, for kids and other things, I don't feel as safe. That's. Something that if we could make a little bit more truly connected from one end to the other. I think that'd be a great opportunity then for people to have better access to to town.
Interesting. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thanks for all your thoughts. I appreciate you putting your name in the ring. And as I said to other people, we will have the opportunity to make a decision later in the meeting. So if you want to stick around, please do.
Okay, thank you.
Be with us.
Alright, thanks.
And Ms. Jessica Patterson, I realize I skipped right over you. I'm sorry about that. But yeah, please. And this is the closest I've gotten to anyone in their actual slot, because you're only three minutes off, so.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for joining us. So if, yeah, like the others, if you could please just start by reintroducing yourself. I know we've read your material. But just sort of give us an encapsulation as to why you're interested in being on Parks Open Spaces and Trails.
Yeah, thank you all so much. So I am Emily Chiswick Patterson. I'm a six or so year resident of Tiburon. And I have a background in nonprofit work, client services, and most recently counseling psychology. Which lends, I think, a blend of listening, not just listening, but really understanding people, bringing people together. And an understanding of working within constraints, being a, be they regulatory or financial. Tiburon has incredible natural resources. We all know this. Nobody lives here because of the cost of living, right? There are reasons that draw us to town. And so when I think about how I would like to engage with our community and sort of be more involved. It's certainly a place that that draws me when we think about kind of this is the most beautiful spot in Marin. And how do we help utilize our resources and make sure that what we're doing is beneficial to all of us in the short term? And responsible in the long term and thinking about that. So I've seen what Post and the council in the town have done, tremendous investment in our resources. Look at something big like Macagny Green and some of the smaller things, bike, the bike fixing station down at Blackies, right? But I do think, like some others have said, that there is opportunity for growth and improvement in the work that we do around our open spaces and trails. Particularly the areas that are top of mind for me are sort of increasing constituent input to help determine what some of those areas might be. Thinking about access across a number of, a number of different ages, ability, financial resources. And even some low-hanging fruit within that, such as there's no comprehensive map of the resources that we have in this town that's available online. And I think about safety, think about, people have mentioned this already tonight, but about bikes, about our walking places, about some of our playground equipment. So I really do think, again, I feel I'm repeating people, what people have said. But as we look at the master plan forthcoming, as we look at the place that the town is in, I think there's a real opportunity to engage deeply in this work. To listen to what people are looking for, to understand what we're working within. And hopefully create a future that pays attention to not just the urgent, but the important going forward. And I'm happy to say more about any of that.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Fredericks, you want to start with your questions?
Well, I gather you're aware of the existence of the master plan work. Were you able to attend the post workshop or any of the staff reports, have an idea of the alternatives?
Yes, and some of, most, I would say, most of my engagement recently has been through reading things. I should say I have a small baby and so I've been doing a lot of middle-of-the-night reading of reports and things, more than able to make it to meetings and the whole. But I've been able to fill out surveys. I've been able to read. And early on in the master plan, there was that great presentation and sort of engagement through the slides and things like.
Well, I'm one of those people that believes reading is the most efficient way to gather information. So I appreciate that you take the time to do that with everything else that's going on. You know, I really do have a question, but I think I will let Isaac ask his question. About decision-making and then if I have a follow-up, I'll do it.
Thank you. So first question that I've asked everyone is, is what is your favorite park in Tiburon and why?
So I'm gonna say Ring Mountain, because I think it's a pretty incredible access point for so many of us. And that you can be up there in minutes and the views are incredible. I will say, just to kind of put this in the record too, because I know you're only choosing one of the many people here here tonight and getting ideas and notes out there. If you were to say playground, I would say Velvetir Playground, which is not ours. And I acknowledge that. I want to really put a flag in the ground that says, I think the facilities that we have in Tiburon proper. Are lacking compared to our neighbors in Velvetir, Mill Valley, Larkspur, et cetera. And I think we can keep that in mind as we go forward.
Right, thank you. And then my second question is, tell us a little bit about your decision-making process. How are you thinking about things as a post-commissioner?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that. So my understanding, and please do correct me if I'm wrong, but the decision is really the council's on any of these main issues, right? And so my understanding is as a post-commissioner, the work would be to make a very strong recommendation. And the way that I would approach that strong recommendation would be, as many do, which is gathering input from the town, the community. As I said earlier, I think increased constituent input would be tremendous to so many of our conversations. Sometimes the loudest voices are a strong minority, but it's not what is either what most people are thinking or feeling. Or what maybe the best decision is. So gathering input from constituents, gathering input. And we have a fantastic staff here in the town who do a lot of work and make a lot of reports to Post on things. And so bringing all of that together to then make the recommendation to the town council's decision.
Can I just make a comment and it's independent of what you're saying? I've just heard a comment you made come up in the past. What our boards and commissions do is very important. And the decisions they make are what recommendations to make to the council rely on them. They are important. They do make important decisions for us.
Yes, and I certainly didn't mean to imply otherwise of that. But my understanding, it is the the recommended decision that then the council might usually take, but may not, depending on what other information or decisions you might have.
You know, it was clear, but I, to me, I just wanted to make sure it was clear to everyone. Yeah.
Excellent. And then with respect, I know some of the other candidates have mentioned the water reclamation ponds at the, near the sanitary district. Do you see the post playing any role in what becomes of those? And if so, what?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. Is, I guess I don't know if that's under post domain. If so, I mean, it certainly feels like an important part of kind of understanding our public spaces and our ability around the town to have great enjoyment of our spaces.
It's unclear, I guess, you know, maybe the weasels over planning is gonna try to take it over for some of their evil purposes. But, you know, it could be a park or an open space or probably not a trail, but any thoughts on that space?
And I'm sorry, you said the water treatment, the ones by on Blackies?
Or even how you would approach thinking about it?
Yeah, I mean, I think I would go back to my sort of decision-making framework on that. I think, you know, personally, I would, I would put a stake in the ground around some. Various things. Again, I think what we have a lot of in Tiburon is open space. What we have less of is sort of facilities such as playgrounds, such as workout exercise areas. So I think I'd be really interested to see, I saw how tremendous the Macagny Green project was for so many people. And that's one giant pitch, you know, what what could we do with another area that allows something like volleyball, something like other sort of exercise-type facilities? But that, my decision would be based on what others.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate it. So thank you for joining us. I really appreciate listening to what you had to say. And please stick around if you'd like and we'll make a decision in a bit.
Thank you so much.
You know what I'm gonna ask next, right?
Mr. McLean is here.
Alright.
He will be appearing on your TV momentarily.
This is Kathleen.
No, this is Tucker McLean.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Welcome. Are we gonna have audio, video as well, or are you just going audio tonight?
Let me, I'm just getting on my computer. Sorry, I'm back in Philadelphia. Dealing with some family stuff and I just got online. I apologize for my tardiness. I'm gonna try to get on my computer, so I'm gonna rejoin momentarily. Actually, I'll try to do it in tandem and it'll just drop as soon as I'm on my computer.
We can just do it with audio. It's okay. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, so you know, you you submitted materials of interest and we appreciate that. We got a chance to read those. But if you could just start us off sort of reintroducing yourself and giving us sort of the core thesis behind you wanting to be on Parks Open Strays. That would be great. Thanks.
Awesome. So my name is Tucker McLean. I have lived in Tiburon for fourteen years. And one of my good friends and one of my running companions, Park Allen. Was also, I think, on the Parks and Rec Board for a number of years. And I am part of the reason I live in Tiburon, I think, as I explained in my background, is just. I'm I'm a huge, very avid fan of the outdoors and the natural beauty that Tiburon affords us all. But, you know, in pretty much every aspect, the trails, the parks, the surrounding water, the views. The pathways, staircases, the right-of-ways. And I think there is a, I mean, I think Tiburon is one of the most amazingly. Pedestrian, outdoor activity, biking, friendly towns. And I think that's just the beginning. I think there's a lot more that can, that we could leverage. With the property that the town has access to. And and I know it better than anyone I know. In terms of like all of the open spaces, I literally don't know anyone in the town of Tiburon. That knows it nearly as thoroughly as I do. So I don't have a Korean master plan. I actually love the process that has already been taking place. And I participated in one of the planning sessions. Jack, that you were participated in, I think it was a little over a month ago. And and I think the the process is is really wonderful. I love how it's engaging. Older members of the town and younger members of the town. So I don't have a personal agenda. I just think there's a ton more that we can do and take advantage of. And I think I have really good insights that that I can offer to help us further. Progress the town to becoming one of the most pedestrian, bike-friendly and outdoor activity-oriented towns in the entire state.
Thank you very much. And my fellow council members, have any questions for Mr. McLean?
I don't.
Yeah, so so Tucker, what is your favorite park in Tiburon and why?
Favorite park in Tiburon? I, I, I mean, great question. I've coached my girls playing soccer on Macagny Green and I absolutely love it. I think it's a beautiful space. I remember back in the early 2000s, biking by it. And seeing kids playing soccer on it. And this was long before I was married, long before I had kids. And I was like, who gets to do that? That's crazy. But then when I moved here, when I first moved to Tiburon back in the end of 2009. I started running up in Ring Mountain and the Gil Martin Open Space, the old Saint Hillary Open Space. And I was like, I actually got lost a couple of times because it was really foggy. The the fall of, late fall of 2009, there was a lot of fog. I think it's just, that's relatively normal. And I got lost. I got truly lost and I felt like I was in the Scottish Highlands. And I was like, what is this absolutely magical environment? So I'm a huge fan of those open spaces. I am frustrated that there aren't more right-of-ways connecting them all. And honestly, from a, from a health and safety perspective. I think there should be right-of-ways from every neighborhood to get up to higher ground and to get to lower ground. And there are so many neighborhoods and frankly, a lot of cute little parks that are absolute gems. That are completely isolated and not accessible except for one little in and out. And I think that's actually dangerous long-term. And and I think it's a bit of a tragedy that that we don't have more connectedness between all of those spaces. So I didn't, I didn't answer answer your question very thoroughly, Isaac, but hopefully that gives you a little bit of insight.
Very thorough answer, I think. So follow-up is, is can you talk to us a little bit about your. How you would, you would make decisions or what your decision-making process would be as a post-commissioner?
What my decision-making process would be? I'm not sure I I fully understand that question. I'm sorry, it might be just.
You know, maybe, or maybe draw, draw some sort of a comparison between the decision-making process in. In private sector or in in business and public sector?
Sorry, I'm still being a little slow. I, in terms of like how my, what decision-making process I would be influenced by. It's really by listening and hearing from the various constituents of the town. For example, when I was at that, the the working session, the Parks and Rec working session last, I guess it was back in September. There is an older couple that they both were commenting on how they really love being able to do walking tours. And that they would like to be able to do more of that. And that to me was kind of a a sign that there is a lot more desire to further open up. And connect the various components of the town that right now are very isolated. And and I thought that was really interesting, because I feel that way, but to hear a couple. secondaries kind of reiterate similar uh feelings and desires uh towards those those end goals. That's that was new to me. Um and I thought that was really cool. Um I also am friends as you are and as your your family is with lots of younger families who had kids that are doing lots of outdoor outdoor activities. Um and there we heard a ton of ideas at that same session about there are all these spaces that right now are very underutilized or not really in a position to be utilized where um the younger uh members of our community would very readily take advantage of um a lot more opportunities that could be afforded through the the Parks and Rec programs uh that right now don't exist. And I think I just caught the very end of the previous discussion around the the water work uh area done by Black East pasture, which is one of those examples that I know has been uh coming up a lot uh over the last several months, maybe the last couple of years. But I haven't been as involved with that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um and thanks for joining us. Um if you wanna stick around, you're welcome to. Later in the meeting, we'll be making a decision on who to appoint. Um as you may have seen, you're one of nine candidates. Um but thanks for joining us and it was good to hear from you.
Thanks so much.
And last but not least, we have Mister Gafari, not online but in person. Um if you'd like to come to the podium.
It's thing on.
It is.
How's it going, guys?
Good, welcome. So if you could just um start off by reintroducing yourself. I know you sent in material and appreciate it having done that. Um but if you reintroduce yourself to us and uh give us sort of a core reason for why you're interested in being on Parks Open Space and Trails Commission.
Absolutely. So my name is Mike Gafari. I live here in Tiburon, actually on Tiburon Boulevard. Uh with my uh family, my wife and two children, seven to nine years old. They go to the public schools here at Reed and Bel Air. Uh you know, I first fell in love with Tiburon almost twenty years ago uh because of the parks. So I I grew up in Cupertino, not that far away, but I didn't even know what Tiburon was as a kid. There was like kind of Marin County, Sausalito, and then past that, it was all kind of a blur. Uh and then one day, a friend who had grown up in Marin brought me here and we went on a bike ride and we kind of went and did the whole Paradise Loop and I was blown away. Wow, like when I went by Black East pasture, I was just amazed. I said, wow, there's a place like this in the Bay Area that's so special. And at this point now in my life, I've been to, you know, nearly every town and city uh in the Bay Area and I kind of handpicked it. Um you know, I recently also helped and convinced my mother to to move to town to Tiburon. And she was trying to get me to move somewhere down south over there with my kids. And I said, Mom, you know, just as you and Dad landed on this little spot thirty years ago on the map, doesn't mean there's this more amazing place perhaps, like just not that far up the road, like be open minded. And so I convinced her it was great. And so I think there's something special and and you've heard it, you know, I know you guys, I feel bad you're hearing probably some similar sentiments uh nine times over. And so I don't wanna kind of repeat the obvious, uh but uh there is something very special about this place and I think its natural beauty is a big part of that. And so we're all very fortunate to live here. Uh and I think we almost are this like minded community in many ways of people who really appreciate this and made it a priority uh to live in this area, even if it's a little bit inconvenient to drive here sometimes or get here. Even if, you know, another concern of mine is we don't have enough ferry times to to get to the city and there there's all kinds of other things, uh but it's really nice. And so uh you know, if uh it's helpful to the town to have somebody come and help be part of being a steward of, you know, continuing to improve on the natural beauty and and how we utilize it, you know, through the park system. I thought, hey, this is an interesting opportunity. I saw the opening. There was also a piece in there I saw, I think, in the description about part of the role of the commission is think about pedestrians and bicyclists in the town in general, which is something I'm also very passionate and care a lot about. So, you know, from uh you know, the previous applicant was talking about having, maybe he's explored every inch more. I'm not, I'm not totally sure, although that that is one of the first things I did before even moving here. And then after moving here was I made it a point uh to try to explore every inch of open space, every park, everywhere I could. I think there still is like that one hidden park behind like in Clearway in the Bel Air. There's like, there's one that's really hard to access if you don't actually live there, you know, so yes, there are maybe a couple inches that I haven't explored, but I agree, all the open spaces behind Gil Martin, I think what a lot of people haven't done too is don't realize you can connect from up by the the uh Martha property and the top of Heathcliff down to Paradise, actually, like you can get down there and like, there are some of these cool connections that I don't know if the right word is, like, they aren't really marketed. People don't realize that some of this stuff exists. Especially, by the way, now with the the court ruling and everything on Martha and and what's happened, which I think applaud your efforts here. Um I think there's just there's a lot we can do. Um and I know some questions came up about the process. I think that's the last thing I'll touch on. Is I just have a lot of experience over twenty years of uh, you know, serving on boards, public and private. Actually, my first board, I I served on the local in Cupertino um high school district board at the age of eighteen. I was fortunate to get that opportunity. Um and then I was on my condo board uh for, you know, in San Francisco. I've been on uh two nonprofit boards, year up and educational institution and Bridging Tech, uh another nonprofit board I'm on now. And then I've been on many, you know, um more than eight or nine uh private company boards. Uh and so through these different boards, commissions, volunteer opportunities, I think I've just, you know, I enjoy the process of getting people's input. Trying to help motivate people, show some leadership, but at the same time, kind of servant leadership where you try to get input from the community, get everyone involved and then, you know, and then have a vision and help, you know, bring things that hopefully delight people and and, you know, take advantage again of all this of natural beauty we're fortunate to have around us.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um do my fellow council members have questions for Mister Fari?
Um yeah, so uh I I got a couple of questions I've asked everyone. Um so what is your favorite park in Tiburon and and why?
I mean, Black East pasture is just such a no brainer because central location, almost everyone can access it. The natural beauty is how it shows off all the features. It's got our kind of water features. It's got some nature. I, you know, I live close to the hippie swing and some of that, you know, Gil Martin area that we're talking about. I love taking my kids over to old Saint Hillary's and so, you know, like there are all these other beautiful places. Um but there's something special about that hole and then you have access to McKegney and and all those areas. So to me, that's kind of like our our crown jewel and it's important. And so I'm excited when I hear about different, you know, ideas on how to continue to improve that area that have come up. We don't have to kind of belabor those, but I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
And then um can you also talk to us a little bit about the decision making process for um you know, a post commission versus, you know, something you might do in in private sector or or in business?
Well, I think public engagement is much more important, right? So private companies are not run as democracies necessarily, right? You try to take some input and then the CEO, let's say, if the company makes a decision and the board tries to maybe give some advice. But I think in the public sector, it's very different and you really have to make sure you're engaging with the public, you're transparent in all the decision making. You're figuring out all the constituents. There might be people who are not. And so, you know, this is something from a young age I've been interested in. Um you know, I was also political science undergrad and did a joint law degree when I was younger. So this is something I've always been uh interested in and concerned with this civic engagement. And so I think it is very different. Um but at the same time, something really interesting that comes from the private sector is how to also not get stuck in like analysis paralysis or um feeling like you can't get things done, but actually trying to drive drive a process forward while while bringing in all that input.
Thanks. Um and then I think you might have touched on it, but like um in any interaction you've had with the Parks Open Space and Trails, the the Parks Master Plan process going on, have you had any insights from that or gleaned any paths forward for the town in that process?
Yeah, so I've been following along, obviously. Um you know, and I think the ARC also did a great job covering everything that was going on. Um so I don't know if I have kind of a magic insight, like there's a there's some special thing that that's absolutely need to be done, but um I guess I would just say that I think we're lucky that so many people are so interested. Like, I don't think most towns municipalities actually get this much engagement when they start talking about the Parks Master Plan. So I think that's great and I just look forward to continuing that in and of itself. I think that's a very special and we're fortunate to have that. And to get like, to even have nine applicants for this, right? As whoever does it, I think it'd be great, like get all nine people involved in different ways and not lose all of this excitement and momentum we have.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And uh thanks for making the time. Uh any other further questions from Mister Gafari? Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Um and then after a couple of things, we'll be onto an agenda item that considers making an appointment to this board. So if you're welcome to stick around. Thank you. So that was all the interviewees. At this point, we can move on to the consent calendar. Um are there any uh members of the council who need, who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Um any members of the public that would like to pull anything or make a comment on others' consent calendar items? Seeing none. Okay, um so with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. A second. Um all in favor can just say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes three zero. Thank you. So we come to our action items and action item one is um appointments to town boards and commissions, consider making one appointment to the Parks Open Space and Trails Commission. Thank you to all the interviewees. Um do we have a staff report on this action item?
Just very briefly, a little background. Um the Parks Open Space and Trails Commission has had a vacancy since September when council member Nick Farr was elected to the council. We advertised this vacancy. Um according to regular procedure, we accepted nine applications. You interviewed all nine candidates tonight. And just one final note is that the person appointed tonight will serve out the remainder of the existing term until February twenty twenty six. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff from council? No. Um so at this point, I'd love to open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment on this agenda item? I don't see anyone in the chamber. Is anyone online?
Seeing none.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for discussion. Um and I'm just gonna start off by yelling at them first um for being the most excellent group of candidates we've had for any board. Um and it's fitting that there are nine of you. You're the murderers row lineup of um of commission uh applicants. Um and it is you should all be insulted if we don't pick you, but I'm asking you not to be insulted that we don't pick you because eight of you we cannot pick tonight, unfortunately. But really, thank you so, so much for uh coming in and volunteering. It's it's overwhelming. Um thank you. Anyone on the council want to start off with this?
So so let me start. I I do agree. I think everyone here uh has a background that will enrich the public process um and make some good decisions and bring us some creative ideas. Some have priorities to address. Um most of you have community board or business board experiences. Uh one candidate um gets a few extra points from from my point of view, like many of you. Um he had a a good sense of post's current work, which I think is important in making a decision to apply. He certainly had a sense of the community process in government, as many of you did. Uh and many of you, and so did he speak to the goal of increasing opportunities here in town. Um but with my background as a scientist, um I am not partial to the sense that data collection results in analysis paralysis. And one candidate in particular uh did mention the importance of collecting data in making decisions. Um and uh with that, my preference would be to appoint Michael Moon.
Uh thank you. Um uh council member Nick Farr?
Um yeah, I think I think um I would echo um uh Mayor Ryan and and Vice Mayor Fredericks. Um I think we're we're very lucky to have this group of of folks uh um apply for the position. I remember the process when I when I was applying for this position. It was uh I think I I I spoke with with Hugh Alice and and with with the other folks who are the, I think the town council was a very different town council back then. It was a different makeup. Um but I think um I remember the other folks that were also interviewing were very high gal- high caliber folks, very engaged in the community and and I was very impressed, I think, with with the group overall. Um and uh I think, you know, I think we're we're really lucky. I hope that, you know, if we if we don't pick you or if if you aren't selected tonight, that that you do continue to be involved in the Parks Master Plan. It's it's something that I I kicked off as a post uh commissioner. Um and, you know, I I worked in the community prior to being a post commissioner and and wanted to be involved. Um and so so I think I think my hope is that um that all of you amazing folks do continue to to stay engaged and continue to to stay involved in the in the in the the uh the the ma- the master planning process or other areas within within town. Um and I guess sort of with that, I think um uh Vice Mayor Fredericks, I think I I I uh I I think I echo your um support and and uh for for Michael Moon. I think I'd like to um uh nominate him or or uh so I will
Um but I'm I'll say a couple of things, but I can make a motion and then I'll ask for a second after I speak. Hey, so it's interesting. I mean, I'm I'm glad that you had uh opinions because frankly, I would have found it very difficult on my own to come to a decision because every single one of you said at least three things that resonated with me and and certainly like I can't be sincere enough to tell you, other than to take all the Sams afterward this meeting, to tell you how much I appreciate it and how impressed I was with all of you. Um and so I and I think that each of your, e- even though sort of like your Venn diagram of candidacies was substantially overlapping, the areas where it didn't overlap are important enough to the town that you should, please make sure you stay involved, sort of what Isaac said, like um for example, just Miss Godfrey, like you have to continue that advocacy, right? Because it was different than what other people mentioned and it's important. We have the ability to make things accessible to people. You know, we can't let those types of things fall through the cracks. So uh uh you know, all of you sort of said something that will be contributory to the discussion going forward. Um so please stay involved. Um and Tucker McLean isn't here, but I will, I do agree that he has the most extensive trail experience on to run. I I follow him on Strava and like I could never follow him running because um I've seen you, Mr. Wong, out there running. Hey, Tucker is ridiculous. Like, he runs all eleven miles of our open our trails here to get to Tam, to Mount Tam, so he can summit Tam. Like, he's ridiculous. Um but that being said, um I I'm glad we have a partial consensus here, so I would love to entertain a motion if you'd like.
Yeah, so uh I I'm I moved that we appoint Michael Moon to uh Parks Open Space and Trails Commission to have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um thank you. That passes three zero. Um so thank you all, really. Yeah, Sam's nine o'clock, just saying. So we can move on now to action item two, if that's if that's okay. It's the employee incentive pay item. Um and do we have a staff report on action item two?
Yeah, just very brief, uh Mister Mayor. Um during the development of the fiscal year twenty three twenty four town budget, the count- uh the council budget finance committee comprised of Mayor Ryan and Vice Mayor Fredericks uh began discussing the possibility of proposing a one time cash retention incentive payment to all the in-town employees. Um at the time, it was decided not to integrate it into the budget and wait till after the budget process was over. Um subsequent to the approval of the budget in June, uh the subcommittee met again and formulated a more uh specific proposal, which is before you tonight. And uh some of the factors that the subcommittee considered uh during these discussions were uh most importantly, the appreciation for the dedicated service of our employees to the town, many of them who worked uh through the COVID pandemic to continue to provide service to all our residents, our recognition that cost of living salary increases in the past three years have been significantly less than the overall inflation rate. And third, uh a desire to uh incentivize our employees to continue working for the town. Based on those factors, the subcommittee has put together a a relatively simple proposal to give a one time cash payment to all employees. Uh the employees would be broken into two categories. Uh all those employees who've worked for the town for more than twelve months would receive a thousand dollar one time payment. And those employees who've worked for less than twelve months um would get a five hundred dollar payment. Funding for the, if approved, funding for this was not included in the budget. So if council chooses to move forward with this this evening, uh I would also ask that they approve a fiscal twenty four budget amendment in the amount, I believe, of thirty eight thousand dollars with the source of funds to be the general fund operating reserves. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Um thank you. And is it the case that we could, as a source of funding, we could do uh money from the CARES Act instead of from the general fund?
Yeah, uh the American Rescue Plan funds, the ARP funds, which we call them. That certainly would be an option as well.
Okay, thank you. Um do we have any other questions for staff on this? Um I'd like to open this item up to for public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on action item two? I see none in the chambers. Anyone online?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Um I will close public comment period then and bring it back. Thank you. Um, I will close public comment period then and bring it back to council for discussion. Do we need to reassure the public that we did not? That, you know, it was the budget subcommittee and here we are and like we didn't prevent the other council members from coming to make sure that we got this recommended issue through or anything. Um, so uh, yeah, there's not even any members of the public I can talk to about this item, but I think it's important in that I, I like the idea of being consistent with our cost of living increases year over year, just because it kind of all evens out, except when it doesn't. And I feel like this is one of those years when it doesn't. And it didn't. And in particular, um, if any of you know Paul Krugman, like he's this Nobel low rated economist and he's like in the last year, he has basically morphed into cat uh quantifying inflation without all the things that are going up. So things like food and energy and housing. So he's like creating this new index that doesn't count anything. He's like, there's no inflation, as long as you don't count things that are going higher. And the reason I mention that is because those are the things that affect our employees most substantial substantially. So our cost of living, as well as we try to manage it, is not is not fitting their compensation well enough. And this is, I feel like this is an important way to remedy that. Um, do we have any other discussion? No.
Um, I was, I was just gonna say I'm I'm uh very supportive of this and I'm glad this uh came in front of us.
Um, and I would like to thank our mayor for several enlightening discussions on how to calculate colas.
Everybody loves.
And also express my support for this.
Thank you. Um, could I have a motion to, uh, so I, what I would love, and I'm not making a motion, I'm going to ask for the motion, but I would consider adopting the resolution, but with the amendment that the source of funds be the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Is that?
Okay, uh, can I say so moved or do I need to say the whole thing?
Yeah.
You can say so.
Okay, so moved.
And I will second that.
All in favor of that, um, being approved, say aye.
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 Great, that passes three zero. Thank you all. Um, our third and final action item tonight is uh Parks and Recreation Master Plan Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Um, we are reviewing and considering updating the membership now that uh, councilmember Frederick, uh, councilmember Nick Far, who used to be on the post as a member of this subcommittee, has become a member of the council. Um, because councilmember Thea and I were also on it, we have a uh, overage of council members on this. Um, do we have a staff report, please? Sorry, I didn't want to do it again.
I think you just gave it. Um, I'll just follow up that um, the council discussed the committee appointments list at their last meeting in October. And you all asked for a little bit more time to think about the makeup of the Parks and Rec Ad Hoc Subcommittee. And so we brought it back for you to reconsider that, just that one tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this? Um, so I'd like to open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on action item three tonight? Uh, there's no one in the chambers. Is there anyone online who'd like to speak on this item?
Seeing none.
I'll close public comment period um and bring it back to council for discussion. Um, and I believe we did get late mail from councilmember Thea withdrawing her name from consideration, so.
Um, so assuming that both councilmember Nick Far and councilmember Ryan would like to be on this subcommittee, uh, I would like to make a motion to appoint them.
I'll second that. Okay. Uh, all in favor of approving that motion?
Aye.
Aye, aye. That passes three zero. Thank you very much. Um, are there any town council reports this evening?
Let me make a short one. Um, um, this is a hypothetical um, that I uh was thinking about at a Baywave meeting. You know what Baywave is? It's the county um, uh, body that is looking at sea level rise. Right now, they're looking at developing a GIS mapping tool and one of the uses of it from their point of view uh would be to be able to identify all the roads um in every jurisdiction and their connections. Uh, I know we've seen concerns on next door about transit and people not using it. And one of the uh rate limiting steps of hopping on a bus to get where you want to go, although there are many in our community and other communities like Mill Valley is the the first and last mile, uh, getting down and back up the hills from public transit. Um, so one of the ideas I suggested um as a member of the community is that in the future, as this tool develops, it could be used to identify collection points in the hills uh where potential bus riders could hop on AV vehicles that will then take them to major corridors where the uh public transit buses run. Um, I thought I'd just share that for people to think about and that's the end of the report.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I'd like to add is, um, do you have something?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I'm sorry, the the question uh was, what what kind of vehicles were they thinking about for that sort of last mile? Were they smaller? Were they sort of normal Marin transit style vehicles?
Uh, Baywave was not thinking of anything except plotting escape routes for uh a potential disaster incidents. Um, I brought the suggestion up at the Transportation Authority of Marin's workshop. Uh, it was not discussed. It was just put on the list of um, and um, um, brilliant ideas. You can leave the adjective out of the minutes, please.
Uh, I just want to mention that last Thursday, uh, there's October twenty sixth, Caltrans held an informational meeting about a project they're contemplating and putting into design that is re- a a maintenance project of Tiburon Boulevard. We've discussed it here as I'm trying to incorporate a a um broadband initiative to bring broadband down. Um, but the meeting was very interesting because it struck me um how few of our residents probably are aware of this the scope and scale of the project. Um, and I just wanted to mention it as something that I hope Caltrans and and we can popularize in terms of getting people to be more aware of this because it's going to impact everybody.
Um, and if, if, is this just going in the minutes or if there is an announcement um about this comment period um being on Tiburon Talk, I don't know if that's the plan. I actually have the link to where the public can send comments. Um, and just email me and I'll send it to you.
We did send it out in Tipton last week.
You just sent it out?
The comment period. I, yes.
Yeah.
Whatever works. If you need it, I've got it. I'll share it.
I think if if anyone's tuning in or if if we can get coverage, maybe even in the ARC about this, I think it's this, this project is incredibly important for Tiburon residents to weigh in on. Um, not just because they're repaving Tiburon Boulevard, but also because they're making there are, there are potentially proposed significant changes to bike access and a gigantic green lane that would be on Tiburon Boulevard, which, um, you know, no matter how you think about it, I think, you know, there there is an implication that lanes could shrink or that there are ingress egress considerations on both sides of the street and thinking about access to Reed Ranch and some of the other other places um as you're leaving town and and as you're entering town. So um, I I would encourage everyone that li- that lives near Tiburon Boulevard. Um, but you know, from Black East pasture to one oh one, especially to 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 be involved in this process.
Thanks. Appreciate that. Um, and if there are no other reports, um, seeing none, um, I will adjourn the meeting. That's it. We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.